Good morning, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the Wednesday, September 18th, 2019, meeting of the Lake Havasu City Planning and Zoning Commission. If you'd please rise and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Madam Secretary, will you please call the roll?
Jim Harris.
Here.
Lucas Steele. Michael Gordon.
Here.
Doug Hardy.
Here.
Donald Bergen.
Here.
Dan McGowan.
Here.
Chad Nielsen.
Here.
Susanna Ballard.
Danny White.
And Kevin Murphy.
Okay. We do have a quorum, even though we have some absentee people. Mr. Schmeling, Correspondence and Announcements?
Oh, I'm sorry. I skipped right over. Minutes from the last meeting, are there any corrections, additions, deletions by commissioners?
If not, I'll entertain a motion. Mr. Gordon?
I'll make a motion to approve.
I second the motion.
We have a motion by Mr. Gordon, a second by Mr. McGowan, to approve the minutes as written. Any further discussion? Hearing none, let's place our votes. Sign out over there and sign in over here. Moving on to Correspondence and Announcements. Mr. Schmeling.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The only announcement that I have is that Luke Morris, the planning staff member, is simply on vacation, so I will be taking over his duties for today.
The B Team. Okay, moving into today's hearing, let me first start by saying this is a public hearing, and there is a structured order to this proceeding. City staff will present each item, there will be time for the commission to ask questions of the staff, and then the applicant will have the opportunity to present their case to the commission. That being done, we will then open the proceeding to the public for their questions and input. I would ask that any one of the public that wishes to speak, limit their trips to the podium and microphone to one only, keep all comments to less than five minutes, and to stay on point and not discuss subject matter that is not pertinent to the decision being considered here today. After public testimony is taken, I will then close a public hearing and bring the motion back to the table for city staff's recommendation, discussion amongst the commission, and eventually a motion to approve or disapprove. The first item on today's agenda is ID, this is number ID 19-2146. It is a request for a major plan development amendment of PD 0500200008. The shops at Lake Havasu as follows. Number one, removing and rezoning tract 2396, Lot A-2, assessor's parcel number 120-61-002, including PetSmart, Beals, and Cactus RV from the current C2 PD, General Commercial Plan Development District, to the C2 General Commercial District. And, item number two, or aspect number two, removing and rezoning tract 2392, Block 1, Lots 5, 6, and 8, assessor's parcel numbers 120-54-005, 006, and 008, consisting of three undeveloped out parcels from the current C2 PD District to a new C2 PD District allowing all C2 uses except storage units, warehousing, and wholesale distribution, and outdoor storage uses. Mr. Schmeling, your presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As complicated as that sounded, this is actually a somewhat simple request. The property located on the northern end of the community, I'm sure we're all familiar by now with where the shops of Lake Havasu are, west of Highway 95, just west of the airport. This is an aerial photo of the existing buildings and uses out there. That location, you've got Home Depot, and you've got basically the mall proper here. Anderson Auto, or, I'm sorry, Anderson Toyota to the north. Here's a zoning map which may help, especially those in the audience, understand what's occurring here. Back in March, we had a similar rezoning request to remove these portions out of the PD, out of the original PD. This is very similar to that in that this location right here is where the parking lot, as well as the Beals and Cactus RV and PetSmart are located in that building. They simply wish to rezone that to C2, just as the other buildings did back in April. And then these are the three out parcels, if you will, the three vacant parcels out front. I've got a map here where you can kind of, it's overlaid over the aerial photo where you can see this is the building I indicated. That's simply going to go to C2, wherein all of the uses allowed in the C2 District will be allowed if approved. And then these three out parcels, the applicant chose to, instead of just rezoning those simply to C2, because there was some concern expressed way back in April when we did this regarding the vacant lots and the potential of some more objectionable uses within the C2 District, felt that it would be more approvable, limiting themselves to some of the uses, so they're going to a new, it will be a new PD, C2 still, with the base zoning district. It's essentially removing itself from the old PD, and the limitations on the new PD will be the uses that you mentioned in the beginning. That's only going to apply to the three lots, Lot 5, Lot 6, and Lot 8. Those uses include, what did we say, storage units? Storage units, warehouse, and wholesale distribution, and outdoor storage uses as well.
You said include, you mean exclude?
Correct. Be prohibited from having the ability to locate in that location. Staff also suggested that there is, as part of the background research, that there was a condition that applied to the original approval, the original PD, that had to do with signage, and I've got the actual ordinance here, and we're requesting that this condition also follow through whereby those out parcels, they're restricted and don't have the ability to place freestanding signs along the highway, and that basically goes back to continuity where these all fall under that same restriction. We felt it was appropriate to apply that same restriction to these in the event that they get rezoned to their own PD. That concludes my portion of the presentation. If you have any questions, I'll try to answer those for you.
Questions of staff from commissioners? I'll start with a question first. Why are we not applying those three restrictions to the first part of the requested rezone? The storage and the...
To this one? This piece?
Yes, the storage and the outdoor display storage, et cetera.
Well, first of all, the request wasn't for that. Second, staff felt that, given the recent rezoning of the other interior buildings, and the fact that the restriction wasn't placed on those, as well as this site, for the most part, is already developed. It's got an existing building, therefore, it's somewhat limited as to what you're going to get there as far as uses. These lots, being completely vacant, probably need that restriction because those, as we've seen in the past, could develop into any and all uses associated with C2. We would suggest that, given the fact that this building is already in place, the likelihood of that changing is probably...
Where I'm going with that comment is the outdoor storage of the Cactus RV, or whatever the RV place is, filling up that entire parking lot which was designed for parking for cars, as a display and storage facility.
That is something that you may want to ask the applicant or the owner, if they're present, what they intend to do for future uses, if they even know. But we felt that, even though the display was something that was probably not considered in the original mall development, it's something that is permitted in the C2 District and could be allowed, and we've put things in place that limit the number of parking spaces that they can impact based on the square footage of the building that they're using, or based on the portion of the entire building that they are.
So there is no PD or anything like that that allows that storage at parking? It's just an outright permitted use, is that what you're saying?
Correct. As far as outdoor display, that's a permitted use in the C2 District, that's correct.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right. Any other questions of staff by commissioners? Mr. Nelson, are you looking like you're going to have a question?
No, I have the same. I'm thinking about the same thing. You know, that the problem with that building there and that outdoor storage is they're taking up the parking for those shops, specifically in the alleyway. They've got boats parked in that alleyway where you've got parking spaces that go at a diagonal, and they just park the boats longways right across them. So if you were going to go visit one of those shops, you know, I just don't know if that's something that the HOA would handle, or it's before us, so is it something that we should handle? But I'm thinking along the same lines. Currently, there's plenty of parking there, but, you know...
Well, my question was, is it basically permitted at this point, in which you've already addressed that and said it is?
Well, he said that it's permitted in C2, but is it permitted in their...
In the parking lot of C2?
Is it permitted in their current zoning?
Well, it is permitted in the current zoning. We've made that determination, and we've allowed it, obviously. As whether it's limited somehow or somewhat within the HOA, I don't know to what extent. I don't know what those agreements are, we're not aware of those. But it has been determined that, as the original PD was approved, it allowed a variety of uses, and I gave you a little bit more in-depth background in your staff report because the original PD, before it became the shops, even had industrial parts to that original plan development. So as a result of moving down the road essentially from the very first PD to the second PD and so on, we determined that that use would be allowed in the underlying zoning district, therefore could be allowed within that PD.
Well, and the reason I ask is, obviously, it was not intended for that type of use. And I personally, and this is just personal preference, I would hate to see a fence go up and it become a storage lot when it was intended to be parking for retail or whatever. And that's just, it just appears to me that it's kind of outside of the expectations of that property. But if it's legit, if it's legal, then that's something we need to work on.
Yeah, if it's legal, then it's just up to their association to deal with it and allow it or not allow it.
Mr. Gordon?
Stu, to be clear, there's two different uses there, right? Outdoor display of vehicles that's happening currently.
Uh huh.
That's not being prohibited on the out parcels. What's being prohibited on the out parcels is outdoor storage.
Correct.
So that same use that's happening today could happen as well on the out parcels?
Yes, whether it's RVs, vehicles, or personal watercraft, any of those things, we would lump those into the same category. It would be the outright storage, whether it's storage units or a storage yard essentially, would be prohibited, and I think once you get into the recommendations, staff also removed another use that's similar to that. It has to do with the repair of vehicles as well, that we felt that that's something that probably should be prohibited in that new PD as well.
That brings up a point. Is the facility that's currently there, are they doing repair on-site?
They shouldn't be.
Okay. All right. Any other questions of staff? Okay, is the applicant present? Would you like to make a presentation? State your name for the record, please.
Hi, Rob Sampson, with Selberg Associates. Is your microphone on? State it again, please, Rob.
Hi. Good morning, everybody. My name is Rob Sampson with Selberg Associates, 2130 Mesquite Avenue, Suite 204, here in Lake Havasu. I don't really have a presentation for you because Stuart just handled most of what we were going to say, but just here to answer any questions you have, and ask you please look favorably on this, as you know, retail, in general, across the country, is in disrepair, big box retail especially, and this owner's looking to take advantage of some of the omni-channel format, distribution, and outreach that other people in the mall are looking at doing as well. Another thing that we're looking at doing is trying to attract a new variety of tenants, not in a detrimental way to what's out there. Obviously, we all want to play together nicely with everybody. We just have to find new avenues to keep the building open and viable. You know, looking at family fun centers and those kind of things are a lot of what he's looking to do, but with the current, you know, state of the mall, where, you know, we've lost another tenant in there, and it sounds like there may be a few that are going to be departing shortly as well. We just want to have the flexibility to attract new tenants and try and keep the building what it was intended for, which is essentially the mall that we all, you know, those of us who've been here the 20 years have fought for and seen built and haven't seen it go as smoothly as we would have hoped it to go. So we're just looking to help this, the owner of these three buildings and these three out parcels, to find ways to be more viable.
Okay, questions of the applicant? I'll start with, do you have any idea, or are you anticipating any type of, specific type of business going in there?
At this particular moment, there's nobody that's signed up for anything in particular. He's reached out to a couple of different ATV-type, watercraft-type businesses with no success, so at this point, I don't have an answer for you. And as you know, there's three tenants in the building, the Cactus RV, so those ones are filled out to capacity at this point.
It wasn't a requirement, it was just curiosity.
No, we don't have anybody at this point.
Any other questions of the applicant? Hearing none? Thank you, Mr. Sampson.
Thank you.
Okay, I'll open it up to the public. This is a public hearing, and if there's anybody that wishes to speak on this item, either pro or con, please come to the microphone. Anybody at all? Hearing none, I'll close the public hearing portion of the meeting, bring it back to the table for staff's recommendations.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The staff finds the proposed rezoning meets all the requirements set forth in 140504L. Based on those findings, the Development Review Committee recommends that Land Use Action 19-2146, amending PD 050020008, be forwarded to the City Council with the recommendation of approval as follows. Number one, removing and rezoning tract 2396, Lot A-2, APN 12061002, including PetSmart, Beals, and Cactus RV from the current C2 PD, General Commercial Plan Development District, to the C2 General Commercial District. And also, removing and rezoning tract 2392, Block 1, Lots 5, 6, and 8, consisting of three undeveloped out parcels from the current C2 PD, General Commercial Plan Development District, to a new C2 PD, General Commercial Plan Development District, allowing all C2 uses but excluding vehicle service or repair, storage units, warehousing, and wholesale distribution, and outdoor storage uses. And that condition number two, as described in Ordinance 07-878, restricting freestanding signs on the out parcels remain unchanged.
Okay, we are now at the table for discussion and/or a motion by commissioners. Mr. Nelson?
The only other discussion that I would bring up is, let's see, medical marijuana dispensary or infusion facility? I just want to make sure that we're all looking at all the permitted uses, if there's anything else that we don't think would make sense in there. I mean, everything else looks...
Where are you?
Under, on the floor, documents, or agenda, documents, permitted use table, then view document. You could just scroll through, I think we should scroll through what's permitted under C2.
I have a copy of that that I can put on your screen as well.
Okay, we'll go back to the screen.
I can go through them if you want.
I wish you would. That was, in my opinion, that's probably a good catch.
Okay, so hotels, motels, conference facilities, business art, vocational schools, offices, medical offices, clinics, research and development, laboratory, personal services, self-storage, mini-storage, so, I mean, that's permitted. Self-storage and Mini-Storage. We're saying no storage.
That's one that's going to be removed.
Okay, so it doesn't say mini-storage, but...
Storage period.
Indoor recreational entertainment, that's one thing that we're hoping goes in there. Outdoor recreation or entertainment. Shooting range is permitted.
No, it's not.
No, it's, it's empty.
Oh, did I miss that? Oh, yeah, sorry. Thank you. Studio, theaters, auditorium, alcoholic beverage sales, building materials store, general retail, small retail, general retail, large retail, medical marijuana dispensary or infusion facility, adult retail, big box retail, car wash, light vehicle sales or rental, light vehicle service or repair, that would be like your ATVs and stuff, right?
Correct. And then the repair is also highlighted, that's one that they're going to be prohibited from using on the out parcels.
Okay. Marine equipment sales, rental service, and storage is permitted. Parking facility, warehouse, and wholesale distribution, recycling, small collection facility, and I think that's it.
Thank you, Mr. Nelson. I think your point's well-taken for the medical marijuana aspect and distribution. I wouldn't mind seeing that restricted as well.
It is a conditional use permit requirement.
I don't think so.
I think it was permitted.
The cultivation facility requires a conditional use permit.
Oh, the cultivation does.
Yeah, the, hold on.
The retail and sales.
Medical marijuana dispensary is permitted.
Is permitted, yes.
Yeah. All right, for edification, what's an infusion facility?
I would have to go to the back of the book and look up those definitions.
You want to answer that, Nancy?
Come to the microphone, state your name for the record.
We have definitions for both the retail aspect and the infusion portion. I think Kelly's looking them up right now in the current code.
Hello, I'm Nancy Campbell. I'm Nancy Campbell, and I know what an infusion is. Dr. Sweet does infusions, Considered Infusions, and so does Innovative Health and Wellness. Several medical facilities in the community do infusions. Basically, you just go in there and you get IV infusion of what kids are doing nowadays, per se, is hydration therapy after being drunk all night, so there's an infusion therapy. There's real positive infusion therapy clinics as well, so just because it's connected to marijuana, that doesn't necessarily have anything to do with it.
Thank you.
That's my answer.
Thank you for your clarification.
Appreciate that. My thought still stands that that's probably not an appropriate place for it.
Yeah, it's too bad that it's combined, because, you know, an infusion facility, like Nancy was saying, that's combined with the kind of a spa-type, you know, spa-type business, so it's kind of a tough thing, and I'm not saying that I'm against that whole thing, but I'm just saying that we need to review all of these things if we're going to make a decision.
Well, the decision will be on the table here shortly, and that would be something that can be added or subtracted from the motion. Any further discussion by commissioners? Hearing none, we are at the table for discussion and/or a motion.
I have another question for Stu.
Mr. Nelson?
Currently, could a medical marijuana dispensary or infusion facility, under the current PUD, go in there?
The medical marijuana dispensary or infusion, the way that it's written and the way that it's defined within the zoning code would be permitted in the C2 District, so we would be able to allow that within the existing PD, as well as what is being proposed right now on those vacant lots.
Okay, we're still at the table for discussion and/or a motion. I see that the applicant might like to add something. If you'd come back to the microphone and state your name again for the record.
Hi, Rob Sampson again with Selberg Associates. We've just recently designed a couple of medical marijuana facilities, and they are highly regulated, and they are, there's distances from daycare facilities, distances from, you know, schools, and anything that has children in it, these businesses are not able to go into if there's anything within that area. So not having done a research of where the nearest daycare facility is, if there's a home daycare, that qualifies as a daycare, so potentially wouldn't be even acceptable anyway. And that has to be approved through the state, so even if someone came in and said they want to do one in that location, they have a number of levels of due diligence that they have to prove to the state that it's an acceptable location, and then they would have to come back and make that point as well. So that's one thing. The other thing I wanted to mention is, we didn't, what we had submitted, see that the auto repair was a removed item, and that's something that I think we should talk about a little bit. And the reason I say that's because if you look at any of the malls in the more metropolitan centers, there's typically a Tire Pros or a Discount Tire, Big O Tires, that's associated with that on the out parcels, and that's what they're for. I mean, I think when we're all thinking about vehicle repair, we're thinking about degenerated, broken-down vehicles that sit outside for six or seven months at a time. Everything that, as far as I'm aware, the CCNRs prohibit, you know, things like that from happening, so taking away the applicant's, or sorry, the owner's opportunity to attract another, you know, Big O Tires, or Ron's Tire Pro, or one of those, I think may be something that's not in his best interest, and it may not be in the best interest of the community, because I think it's a business that if it's maintained well and kept clean, it certainly could attract a lot of traffic out to that mall, and let's face it, we all want traffic out at the mall, so please consider that as well.
Good point. Stuart, is there any way of watering down that condition, such that major auto repair is excluded? I'm just reaching here.
Well, unfortunately, we are bound by the uses as described in the table and as defined in the back of our development code. I don't believe it separates the tire facilities at all from... the tire facilities at all from these repair uses were all associated with whatever type, whether it's marine, whether it's automobile, whatever. But there, I, I don't know of anything in the table, not aware of anything where they specifically talk about tires themselves, so and without looking at the definition, I don't have the definition in front of me. It probably does include tires, so therefore, I guess the short answer would be no. There's no way of, of splitting those apart based on the current code, or based on the current zoning descriptions.
Stu.
Mr. Nelson.
Under the use permits, um, or the uses permitted, there is heavy vehicle and equipment sales, rental, or service, which is conditional. Light vehicle sales or rental is permitted. Light vehicle service or repair is permitted, and I kind of have the same concern as, let's, let's just say, for example, Arizona West moved out there. You know, people want to buy an ATV or a Razor, and they might want to add a light bar and different wheels and, and roll cages and roofs and that may disallow someone from like that, someone like that from moving out there if we if we cancel service and repair altogether, you know?
Well, if the, if the commission feels that it, it could be an appropriate use, you can and have the ability, because it's a PD, once again, to remove that from the list of uses allowed or add it, add it to. If, if our concern was just that, that we understand that in, in all of those types of uses, there, there are some
ancillary uses.
Enhancements that you do with regard to potential, you know, light bars, different rims, whatever else. I, I think this was getting away from the motor repair, boat motor repair, that kind of thing. But, um, I, we, we recommended just to prohibit it in that area, just to get away from all of it. If the commission feels that it's a use that, that could be acceptable, you can remove that from the condition.
And the difference between a heavy, heavy vehicle and equipment would be, what, dump trucks? What's, what's the difference?
I, I'm not looking at the definition section right now, I don't have the code up, so I'm short of reading the definition to you, I assume that that's what it means, heavy equipment, larger.
What are your thoughts?
Mr. Nelson, I don't see a, as Mr. Sampson said, a to use specific businesses, a discount tire or a Big O tire as a detriment to one of those parcels.
I don't either.
A full-blown mechanic shop is going to be doing any kind of repair work, I do believe is not appropriate for that area.
Well, how do you restrict? I think, I think that what most people would be concerned about is the outdoor storage, the, the cars sitting overnight.
Right.
Stacks and stacks of cars and oil leaking all over the place. You know, when you go into the metropolitan areas, they typically, everything is within their, their garages, everything is within their shops.
Mr. Gordon has a comment.
A question, Stu, um, the recommendation is to remove vehicle service? That's not even a straight definition in our code, is it? Or is that like a, I mean, does that, does that cross out all of these things? Heavy vehicle service, light vehicle service, marine equipment service?
I'm trying to get to the definition section right now. See if I can find.
Because it's not in the permitted use table as vehicle service.
Mr. Sampson, unless you've got something else, you can sit down. Or you can stay.
Thank you.
Nothing under vehicle service.
So we probably have to be more specific.
Yeah.
Anyway.
Were we looking for heavy, heavy's equipment or something?
Heavy vehicle and light vehicle.
And just, I want to go back to the America, oh, I'm sorry.
It doesn't.
Mr. Chair, if I can go back to the medical marijuana for the infusion facility, what that means, and I apologize, Wi-Fi isn't working in here, so it's impossible to look things up, so.
Ms. Gary.
Thank you. And so when we're talking about medical marijuana infusion centers here, the definition is a facility that incorporates medical marijuana in the means of cooking, blending, or incorporation into consumable edible goods. So it's, it's just a creation of edibles.
Thank you. Come back to the microphone and we'll, we will allow it. State, state your name for the record again.
Nancy Campbell. I think you made a really good point because my son owns cycle therapy, and as long as I think retail is involved with the condition, as you're selling motorcraft, bicycles, whatever, a skateboard, you know, a tennis shoe, and it needs to go back for repair, I think it's really important to let the developer develop the land according to, obviously, none of us want storage units all lined up there, but I think we need to start depending on our developers to make the decision, since they're the ones that are investing and paying the property taxes. Enough said, thanks much.
Thank you.
Here's, here's the first example I found. With regard to the marine equipment sales rental service, the way it reads, it does say repair and maintenance activities may range from light activities such as engine tune-ups and detailing to heavy activities such as engine overhauls, bodywork. Okay, that's just, that's the marine. I assume that the rest of them read similar, but let's find out. Oh, here. Includes tire rotation, not fuel. It's, it specifically prohibits fuel. Repair of vehicles, bodywork, painting, or major engine transmission repairs. That's light vehicle service and repair. Light watercraft, I assume reads similar, yeah. This includes, uh, fueling facilities, maintenance activities, including engine tune-ups, oil changes, incidental storage of watercraft, parts, sail aparts. And let's go to the heavy. Sure.
Mr. Gordon has another comment.
Okay.
Yeah, I think vehicle service that's in the recommendation here shouldn't be there because it's not specific anyway to the zoning code. And if we left it in, it would eliminate all of those items, I would assume. So I think that needs to be striked out of that recommendation. The only question to me is whether we leave the heavy vehicle in there or not. It is a conditional use permit, so if we left it, it would have to come back. I'm probably impartial either way, but I think we should leave vehicle storage off personally because it is instrumental to, um, the other portions of those items in terms of, of sales and such.
It's a necessity.
Correct.
Mr. Nelson, do you have another comment? Okay.
It's just, it's just how to say it, you know? With, you need the, the business owner to have the ability to service and modify the product.
Mr. Gordon.
That's pretty clearly there amongst all of these definitions, that they can sell and repair on everything from marine to light vehicle to, right? So as long as those are permitted uses, that should cover both the sales and the repair of those items.
I think we just need to agree on one of them. They all have some little caveat on it, in it, like the, like the jet ski repairs was, you know, they would allow fuel sales. So is that a big deal? I mean, do we care about that, or? I mean, they're probably, it would allow them to install a pump, I guess. Do we want a pump out there, you know?
I don't think we need to get into the weeds personally on that right now. I'm assuming, I'm assuming the, the intent of that is for specialty sales of oils and high-performance products.
Sure.
Not, I would think it, you know, not a...
And nobody has an issue with that, do they?
Although fuel sales, right, a C2, so a gas station's flat out permitted use anyway, isn't it? So I don't think it's even a, a discussion.
Should be a good point.
Okay, good.
All right, we are still...
Personally, I think we should just strike the vehicle service out altogether, vehicle service or repair, and go with the other restrictions.
And you're saying since, since heavy equipment repair is a conditional use
Anyway.
item anyway, that has to come in for hearing.
Come back for additional discussion if it ever came up.
That's a good point.
But is a motorhome considered? I'm sorry. But is a motorhome considered heavy equipment?
I wouldn't say so.
I'd probably not.
But it, I mean, some of them are buses.
Well, they're diesel pushers, but
Yeah.
It's not a dump truck or a, a cat loader.
Yeah.
All right, we are still at the table for discussion and/or a motion. Everybody's kind of looking at you, Mr. Nelson.
Yeah.
Are you taking the lead, or is Mr. Gordon going to do it?
Go for it, Mr. Gordon. Did you already change it? Was it already changed in here? It was corrected, okay.
It was corrected.
So you're wanting to add the elimination of the medical marijuana, is that correct? Was that the consensus?
That's open to, to discussion. I think what Rob said was, you know, I mean, obviously, if they, if they have it and someone wants to do a child dentistry next door, they won't be able to, to do a child dentistry. And if they have a child dentistry, then they won't be able to have the medical marijuana facility.
I would submit that your statement is not necessarily correct. If the medical marijuana facility is there first, the child daycare facility has the option of being there or not.
I don't know.
Ms. Gary?
I don't know the answer to that question. I don't, I can't pull up our code for one, so I can't read our own zoning regulations for the medical marijuana, and then it all depends on if they get a permit to locate there anyway. So, and I don't know the rule about dentistry. I don't, I haven't heard that it's correlated to a daycare, so I don't know that that...
I would presume it'd be the same thing with regards to a bar or liquor sales in the vicinity of a school, a daycare facility, a church. If the bar's there first and the church buys the property next door, the daycare, certainly up to them whether or not they want to build there, the bar was not in, uh, non-conformance. Mr. Gordon.
I think we should ask the applicant if they're okay with putting a restriction on for the medical marijuana uses.
Mr. Sampson?
Rob Sampson again. You know, it's a tough question to answer. The reason I say that's because there's a millennial generation and, and those who have followed that have no problem with the use of medical marijuana. And it's becoming more commonplace in urban centers like, uh, Seattle and Colorado proper. I don't know that, I mean, from my standpoint, I'm not a user of marijuana, so it doesn't bother me one bit one way or the other. But from the, looking at this from a development standpoint, and as Nancy had mentioned, maybe allowing the developer to make smart decisions with his, with his intentions. I mean, right now, there isn't one planned, and there isn't one coming in the near future that we know of. You know, cards on the table, we don't have anyone that's coming there. And as you can see, those lots have been empty for a better part of 12 years, so. So my, my request would be at this point, if we can approve it without it, then it gives the opportunity to bring one more element that could potentially make traffic at the mall. But if it's something that you guys are steadfast on, then, you know, we can work with you for sure.
Okay, thank you. I'm impartial on it, so if you want to add that restriction, then go ahead and make...
I'm not steadfast on it. I think when he came up earlier, it answered my question whether, you know, if they have to do a bunch of research to put it in. And if they put it in, they could be negating, you know, he could be cutting his nose off to spite his face if he puts it in. So I, I don't think we should restrict it.
Okay.
Okay, we're still at the table for a motion.
I'll make a motion.
Mr. Gordon.
Okay. I make a motion. I move to recommend approval of Land Use Action 19-2146 for major plan development amendment of PD 05-200008. The shops at Lake Havasu as follows. One, removing and rezoning track 2396 from the current C2 PD to the C2 district. And two, removing and rezoning track 2392 block 1 lots 5, 6, and 8, consisting of three undeveloped out parcels from the current C2 PD to a new C2 PD district, allowing all C2 uses except storage units, warehousing, and wholesale distribution and outdoor storage uses. Three, restricting the placement of freestanding signs on the out parcels lot 5, 6, and 8 along Highway 95.
Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Gordon.
I second it.
Okay, I'm going to go with Mr. Hardy for the second, since we had two together. Any further discussion on the item? Okay, hearing none. We have a motion on the table to approve ID 19-2146 with staff's recommendations eliminating, though, item in item number three, vehicle service or repair. Any further discussion? Let's go ahead and place our votes.
Motion passes six to zero.
Congratulations. All right, the next item on the agenda is the call to the public. This is where we open up the microphone. Do anybody on any subject, you can come and address the commission. We may not respond, but this is the call to the public if anybody wishes to comment. Seeing none, I'll go ahead and close the call to the public. Future meetings, Mr. Schmeling?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The October 2nd meeting's been canceled for lack of items, and I believe that the October 16th one will be canceled as well because I don't have any items, uh, in the hopper at this point either.
One more, one more thing of business that we need, probably need to discuss, uh, in the future is putting on elections for chair, et cetera.
Yes, we will make sure that that gets on the next agenda.
Okay. All right. I think that concludes our business today. We are adjourned.